Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'd like to call the August 5th, 2019 Crestille City Council Meeting to order. If everyone will please rise for pledge allegiance to the flag.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Ray Salaman.
Here.
Glenn Conklin.
Present.
Scott Dyke.
Here.
John Verche.
Here.
Barbara Sclaire.
Claudia Gazal.
Here.
Tina Oberlin.
Present.
Marco Colli-Pietro.
Here.
Nate Albert.
Here.
Joe Kubal.
Here.
Okay, for the record, I received a text from Alderman Sclaire this afternoon. She's a little bit under the weather, so she has excuse for this evening's meeting. You have before you the minutes of the July 15th Crestille City Council Meeting. Motion would be in order?
So moved.
Second. There are motion by Alderman Gazal, seconded by Alderman Colli-Pietro. Questions or comments in regards to the motion for the July 15th City Council Meeting? Roll call, please.
John Verche.
Yes.
Tina Oberlin.
Yes.
Nate Albert.
Yes.
Joe Kubal.
Yes.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
Claudia Gazal.
Yes.
Marco Colli-Pietro.
Yes.
Motion carries.
You also have before you the minutes of the City Council Work Session that was held on July 22nd, 2019. Motion would be in order?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Colli-Pietro, seconded by Alderman Dyke. Questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Joe Kubal.
Yes.
Nate Albert.
Present.
Tina Oberlin.
Yes.
Claudia Gazal.
Yes.
John Verche.
Yes.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
Marco Colli-Pietro.
Yes.
Motion carries.
We do not have a business promotion this evening, so we will continue with the agenda items. We will go to our City Administrator, Heather McGuire. Good evening, Heather.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I have no agenda items for approval this evening. The informational report is on file, and just for the public's information, we will be sending out some surveys. The City of Crestille is embarking on a collaborative citywide community branding and marketing project designed to highlight the city's unique attributes and characteristics as it approaches its 60th anniversary in 2020. A key element of the branding project is gathering input from the Crestille residents and businesses to create a strong unified brand and message that is reflective of the city. Crestille is partnering with the University of Illinois Springfield Survey Research Office to collect feedback via a survey mailed to each household and business in the community. Residents and business owners are asked to fill out the survey and return it in an enclosed prepaid envelope by September 6th. There will be an online option as well, so if you could please pass that information along to anybody that you think would be interested in that and promote that, I would appreciate it. I'd be happy to answer any questions this evening.
Any questions of City Administrator?
Heather, if we sign out like an official press release to the newspaper?
We will be, those will be going out this week, correct? So we will be pushing that message through as many media outlets as we can, including WJOL. A smart message has been issued that went out earlier today, and we will be putting that on the website as well. So we are reaching out with every outlet we can, but if the aldermen and residents can help continue to push that message, I would appreciate it.
Thank you. We got all three of them at one time today, my cellphone, my home phone, and the tech message.
As did I with the voicemail, yep.
Yeah.
And we ask for cooperation because it would be a great benefit for us to see what your thoughts are and, you know, for this city to move forward, so. Any other questions of City Administrator? All right, thank you, Heather. Moving on to our Public Works Department, our Director of Public Works, Tom McIttis. Good evening, Tom.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilors. Two items on the agenda this evening. As discussed at the previous work session, first is a janitorial service contract extension with Unimax Corporation. They have been providing janitorial services on several city facilities for the past year, and we seek to extend that contract by one year as per the original agreement. That value of that contract is $34,800, and I seek your approval on that.
So moved, just presented. Second.
We have a motion by Alderman Oberlin, seconded by Alderman Gazal to approve the contract extension with Unimax Corporation, the amount of $34,800. Questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
John Verche.
Yes.
Marco Colli-Pietro.
Yes.
Nate Albert.
Yes.
Joe Kubal.
Yes.
Claudia Gazal.
Yes.
Tina Oberlin.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Secondly is the requisition for candidate for employment.
We currently have a vacancy in the labor position. That would be at the East Side Treatment Plant. This issue is gone before the Civil Service Commission. I know that they agreed to move forward. We seek your approval to offer employment to the next available candidate.
Motion would be in order?
So moved, just presented.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Oberlin, seconded by Alderman Colli-Pietro. Questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Nate Albert.
Yes.
Joe Kubal.
Yes.
John Verche.
Yes.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
Claudia Gazal.
Yes.
Marco Colli-Pietro.
Yes.
Tina Oberlin.
Yes.
Motion carries.
That's all we have for this evening. Happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Any questions of Public Works?
Look, Tom, I talked to a person who lives in Willow Falls. Actually, go out to North Drive. He said when you go to pull out, I went down there, when you go to pull out, there's either two evergreens or one evergreen and a tree. And on that tree, a lot of suckers growing on it, and you can't see the visibility. Have one of the guys trim the suckers off the base of that tree? Maybe take one of the branches off the top too.
We'll take a look at it.
It's on city property, it's on a parkway.
Okay.
There's three of them right there together. Okay, thanks.
You're welcome.
How about the Oakland Avenue? Where are we going to get that grass cut down there now?
Whenever the other agency that's doing that for us has the time, we've been on their schedule, I'll take another look at it and find out where they're at in the cycle.
This one's on three foot high already.
I will take a look at it.
It's got to be cut this year.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions? All right, thanks, Tom.
Thank you.
Moving on to Community Development Department, our Community Development Director, Scott McMaster. Good evening, Scott.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I have no agenda items this evening. I do have a side note, though. Our new building, Inspector John Sweeney, started today, hit the road with Kirk and spent most of the day with Kirk out in the field, so you should be seeing him traveling the streets. And with that, I will answer any questions.
Any questions of Community Development? All right, thanks, Scott.
Thank you.
Police Department, our Police Chief Ed Clark. Good evening, Ed.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I have a few things on the agenda this evening. First thing I have is an amendment, ordinance amending parking fines and firework fines for the city. Just kind of hashing out what the points are on these fines is, for parking, it's going to raise the fines to $30 from the $10 where it's at right now. For specific parking violations of handicap parking, it's going to go from 100 to 250 for our discussion previously. It's also going to go to $75 for the violations of parking in a fire lane, snowfall parking, parking within 30 feet from any traffic signal, stop sign, yield sign, or traffic control signal. And in this ordinance is also provisioned that it will increase the penalty for possession, use of explosion of fireworks from $50 with its currently to $150. I'd like to entertain any questions, and I'm asking for approval for this amendment.
So moved.
Second.
We have motion by Alderman Gazal, seconded by Alderman Verche.
No.
Questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
Claudia Gazal.
Yes.
Tina Oberlin.
Yes.
Marco Colli-Pietro.
Yes.
Nate Albert.
Yes.
Joe Kubal.
Yes.
John Verche.
Yes.
Motion carries. Ordinance number is 1818.
Thank you. The second item on the agenda is a police services contract with Caroline Lakes Homeowners Association. It is for October 27th. We've done this every year, it's for their Halloween event. It's from 2:00 PM to 4:00 PM. An officer will be up there just making sure traffic flows correctly. There's no issues with people as far as the trick-or-treaters that are invited in. I'd be asking for approval of this.
What's the waiver of insurance about?
What we've done in the past is with Caroline Lakes is, part of the ordinance, we have required them to carry an insurance waiver. Caroline Lakes is another area of our town that we respond to anyway. It's not like St. Joe's or somewhere outside, so in the past, we've waived that insurance.
And that's okay?
That is, because they would be obligated to answer those calls if they went anyway. So yes, absolutely.
I just want to make sure, because God knows, I've had to get so much insurance, I don't know up from down.
So moved, Mayor.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Albert, seconded by Alderman Oberlin for the Caroline Lakes Police Halloween Detail Contract. Questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Marco Colli-Pietro.
Yes.
Joe Kubal.
Yes.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
John Verche.
Yes.
Claudia Gazal.
Yes.
Tina Oberlin.
Yes.
Nate Albert.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. The third item on the agenda is the purchase and implementation of the less-than-lethal device taser by the company Axon. We've discussed this at length at our work session, and I'm looking for approval to purchase that. If you see in my memo that there's a reduction from what I previously brought to you because of the tax, tax status of our city, it'll be a yearly cost of $23,040 for five years. And again, as we discussed, that includes everything from training to cartridges that we will replace, to any kind of issues, problems, or concerns with the devices. So it's kind of soup to nuts.
So moved, just presented.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Oberlin, seconded by Alderman Albert. Questions or comments in regards to the Axon taser purchases? Roll call, please.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
John Verche.
Yes.
Claudia Gazal.
Yes.
Marco Colli-Pietro.
Yes.
Joe Kubal.
Yes.
Nate Albert.
Yes.
Tina Oberlin.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I do not have anything else on the agenda, and I'll entertain any questions.
Any questions of the Police Chief? I will say that everything that we passed just under your report, Chief, was discussed at the July 22nd work session. I will say that our parking fines, our firework fines were probably a lot outdated, and so I give a lot of credit to everybody for the work that you put into that. I mean, we try to do everything that we can, especially for the handicap in regards to the parking. The fireworks are always a problem for a few weeks around the Fourth of July, so, you know, hopefully we'll try to deter some of those, but I think it's been long overdue for those parking fines and the firework fines and the handicap fines to be increased in this city. So kudos to everybody that worked on that. Any other questions or comments? All right, thanks.
Thank you.
Mayor's report, I do not have anything on the agenda. I do have a couple of announcements. One is from our Financial Director, Ashley Mottika, and I'm sure everybody is aware when you received your water bill, at the end of July, there was a notice in it in regards to the account numbers. All of the account numbers on your water bill has been changed, and that is because of the new format that we have with the computer system. So we certainly want to make sure that everybody gets credit for your payments that are online and through the banking institutions. So I just want to remind all of our residents that there was a notice within your utility bill. If you haven't opened it yet, please take a look at it regarding the recent account number changes. Please make sure that any payments that you make have referenced the new account number structure exactly, including the dash marks as shown on your bill. We want to make sure that you get the proper credit for the payments that you're making online in other formats of payment. So please take a look at that in your water bill. Secondly, I certainly want to give my thanks for our city picnic yesterday. First of all, my heartfelt thanks goes out to all of our residents and our friends that showed up and attended the picnic. It's a great community event. It certainly is a way to renew your old friendships with a lot of people that you grew up with in our city, and it's a great way to make some new friendships along the way. So it was a great crowd yesterday, everybody that did attend. I thank you for your participation in the picnic. Also, to all the volunteers that worked, and I know how many people it takes to put together a picnic of that size, so whether you gave a little help or you gave a lot of help, my heartfelt thanks from the bottom of my heart also to everybody that showed up that worked in any capacity yesterday to make it a successful picnic. And finally, to our sponsors who made cash donations to make the picnic successful, and also to all of the committee members of the Events Committee for their hard work. That is not a one-day event. That is a year-round event. It takes a lot of time, it takes a lot of effort, it takes a lot of commitment, and it takes a lot of loyalty to put that picnic together. So to everybody on the committee, my heartfelt thanks to each and every one of you for all the hard work that you do to make that picnic successful. With that, if there's any questions of the mayor, I'd certainly like to answer them. Hearing none, we will move on to our City Clerk's report. Vicky Hackney, good evening, Vicky.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I have no agenda items this evening. Just a reminder to residents that August 15th, 16th, 17th, and 18th is the citywide garage sale. The last date to get your name on the list, because we do maps and lists by subdivision, is Tuesday, August 13th. The maps will be available on Wednesday, August 14th. So if you have any questions, please feel free to contact the Clerk's office. Also, just to any resident out there at the picnic yesterday, there was a phone found, so if you are missing a phone, I did turn it over to the Chief Police, so it is at the Crestille Police Department. And I know Tina notified the park already too, so. And that is all I have this evening. Great picnic. My feet hurt. My back hurts, but great picnic, very good night. And that's all I have this evening. Thank you.
Questions of City Clerk? All right, thanks, Vicky.
Thank you, Ray.
Our Treasurer's report, Glenn Conklin. Good evening, Glenn.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'd like to report our regular and overtime payroll from July 8th, 2019 through July 21st of 2019, in the amount of $230,669.60. We also have merit retro payroll in the amount of $6,036.43. Our comp time buyback payroll, a month of $26,978. The only item I seek action on is I look for your approval on our list of bills, which in that period totaled $285,881.84.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Dyke, seconded by Alderman Verche. Questions or comments in regards to the list of bills? Roll call, please.
Joe Kubal.
Yes.
Nate Albert.
Yes.
Marco Colli-Pietro.
Yes.
Tina Oberlin.
Yes.
Claudia Gazal.
Yes.
John Verche.
Yes.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
Motion carries.
I thank you all. Any questions?
Questions of the Treasurer?
Thank you. Good night.
Thanks, Glenn. Unfinished business, we have nothing on the agenda. Anybody? New business, we have Plan Commission Recommendation, case number RZ-19-2-7-1. You have the information in your packet. This is for the request of Mr. Richard Burdy for a zoning change. So I will turn it over to our Community Development Director, Scott McMaster, for some opening comments.
Thank you. July 10th was the Plan Commission date that Rich Burdy attended to rezone his properties there northwest corner of Weber and Caton Farm to B3 from B2. Previously, if you remember, he was in here discussing some uses for that property, so he thought, and I think the city agreed, that rezoning to B3 would probably market that property better. If any questions, I will answer or turn it over to Rich himself if you need.
Any questions of, Scott first?
Scott, what, if you mean to B3, what additional uses?
That's pretty much our most widespread use category, so depending on if it needs a special use or not, there's pretty much anything short of manufacturing uses over there.
The biggest difference between the 2 and the 3 on the zoning is really size of the business based on our classification. If you think about B1s is more the mom and pop stores, and then the B3s is your Walmarts, that's sort of how they spread the difference in it, but obviously, it would be restricted by lot coverage on that particular lot.
Any other questions? Okay, I'd like to invite Rich to the podium for the property located at 1604 Caton Farm Road. Anything you'd like to add, Rich?
No, just most of the interest we've had in the property over the last year, six months, everybody that had any interest in it expressed an interest in changing it to be 3 zoning, so after some discussions with Scott, it just seemed like it made sense for everybody.
Questions from City Council?
The current use of that property has a special use?
No, I don't think so. It's currently assigned.
I think it actually is listed as a B2 with a special use, but to be honest, we don't even know what the special use is.
Yeah, I don't know where the special use came from.
Yeah, I mean, it is starred on the building plat.
Well, if they were, if they had gotten a previous, if, as the owner, you've gotten a special use, it would have stayed with you, but if a newer owner comes in, or if a previous owner before Rich got that special use, it would not be applicable to Rich's current property.
I think that might have had to do with that sign manufacturer, or were they doing sign manufacturing on that site a long time ago, and I think that's where that special use originated.
Yeah, they were up front.
Could you share the types of businesses that are, that came to you that wasn't a B3? I mean, you don't have to name them, but what types? A little bit varied. I mean, we've had a few different construction companies like us that had expressed some interest in it, didn't work out for them because they were looking for more outside storage. But we've had probably a few people that were looking at it as an overall investment property, and I think they just assumed the B3 zoning would work better for them in the future.
There's no gas main running close to those properties, is there?
There is.
Kinder Morgan runs both on the west side as well as the north side of that property.
Won't be under the building, will it?
No, no, it's actually outside of our property.
It's on its own property lot line.
Okay, any other questions for Rich?
I think this would just bring consistency to the intersection, and I think all three corners right now are B3, correct?
I think it'd make it more marketable, too, for B3s, too, so. Okay, thanks, Rich.
Thank you.
I will ask, is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak for or against the request of Richard Burdy for the property located at 1604 Caton Farm Road for a zoning change from B2 to B3? Please come to the podium, state your name for the record, your address is optional. Second request, if anyone would like to speak for or against the case RZ-19-2-7-1, the request of Richard Burdy for the property located at 1604 Caton Farm Road for a zoning change from B2 to B3, please come to the podium, state your name for the record, your address is optional. And the third request, if anyone would like to speak for or against case RZ-19-2-7-1, please step to the podium, state your name for the record, and your address is optional. Let the record reflect that no one has approached the podium. Ladies and gentlemen, you have before you an ordinance establishing a map amendment to the Crestille zoning ordinance with respect to certain real property, the petition of Richard Burdy. Motion would be in order.
So moved. Second.
We have a motion by Alderman Verche, seconded by Alderman Dyke. Questions or comments in regards to the motion?
Heather, one more question I got. Regarding the easement that's on the west and north side?
Just to clarify to you, it's not actually an easement. Kinder Morgan owns their own property that runs adjacent to it.
Okay, so is it, is there actually pipelines and utilities underneath there?
Yes. And that's the exact, that pipeline goes on the west side, runs north, crosses over through Weber, and then continues along the east side of Weber Road on the north, which is why all of those lots right to the south of Speedway don't have direct access onto Weber Road because the pipeline runs right there.
Right. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? Roll call, please.
Joe Kubal.
Yes.
Nate Albert.
Yes.
Marco Colli-Pietro.
Yes.
Tina Oberlin.
Yes.
Claudia Gazal.
Yes.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
John Verche.
Yes.
Motion carries. Ordinance number is 1819.
Okay, Rich, you are good to go.
Thank you.
Anybody, anybody else under new business? Okay, moving on to Committee Liaison Reports. Anyone?
Yes. First of all, I want to give my thanks for the picnic yesterday. First of all, I want to thank my co-chair, Nate Albert, for all his help. I want to again thank all the residents that came from all areas, took their vacations and came. Chief, I want to thank the Police Department for their work, and Tom, Public Works, I want to thank them for all their help. I want to thank Glenn for giving so much of his day, Megan for coming and being our Vanna White, selling so many tickets for us. Claudia, thank you for selling tickets for us. Marco and your wife for selling tickets. Joe Kubal for selling tickets. And Madam Clerk, I have to thank you out of the bottom of my heart for everything you did to help me to step in when we had our family disaster that week. You really stepped in and helped me, and I greatly appreciate it. It was very kind of you. You and the Clerk's office, Lori, Jan, I want to thank you for everything you did to assist as well. I want to thank Jackie Matthews and Nick Parks, Linda Streisack, Teresa Conklin and her sister Jennifer. Teresa works with me at Nomark, and she volunteered herself and her sister, and they sold tickets the entire day. What a kind, kind thing to do, and I thank them greatly. And of course, I want to thank my son, who despite his own personal grief, was there helping and doing everything he could to assist to make, to make another great picnic. So I appreciate everybody and everything they all did to assist. I want to thank our sponsors, our Platinum sponsor, Christopher Burke Engineering, Darcy, Terry Darcy, every year he sponsors ARA. This year, our new business, Walk as Children of Life, took over the children's games. They did a fabulous job. I want to thank Mary and all her staff. Nomark Credit Union, Strand, PMA. Glenn, once again, thank you for doing all the printing for us. I greatly appreciate all your help with everything. Our Walgreens, Colesel Brothers, Robinson Engineering, WRDR, and Katz and Katz. Because as you know, without sponsors, this picnic couldn't go on because it's extremely expensive to put on. And we had a beautiful day. I, I, I still thank everybody who had anything to do with the ticket sales because it was wild. And then Nate's going to give his bar thanks.
Yeah, I certainly had a great time yesterday. You know, I think the 10th Annual Picnic was a big success and, and that really, you know, Tina has worked her tail off since our 50th anniversary with this picnic. So I certainly want to thank her for all of her hard work over the years and over the year just for planning for this. So, thank you, Tina.
Thank you.
As far as the big bar, I had quite a few volunteers that put in a lot of, a lot of hours. I want to thank Quinn, Tina's, Tina's son, who has got the muscle behind the bar. Mike Alaco, Dominic DeFoya, Jan and Steve Sardar, Vicky Hackney, of course, Joe Pezzaveno, Jam Plateau, Annette and Brian Parker, Joel Thuringer, Bob Palia. And then, of course, thanks to the Solomon, Solomon Morris Walters family for helping up at the trailer up by the big stage. So thanks to all the volunteers. I look forward to next year.
And anyone that, there, I have these cups for you, our anniversary cups. Anybody, I brought a bag. We, we, we use these as an incentive to raise money with the raffles this year, and we really, we really did well. I don't want to announce the money until they're here, but we did really well for the DAV and Crest Hill. So they're going to be really happy. Megan was like Vanna White over there with those raffle tickets, I'm telling you. So I brought a bunch of these with us that were left, and I have them behind me. For everybody who wants to take some, take some. Thank you very much.
Anybody else? Committee liaison reports. City council comments, positive city council comments? Anything you'd like to share with your constituents? Anybody like to go first this evening?
Oh, we got another fun festival coming up this weekend at the Italian Club. I'm sure Mark was going to announce a little bit more about that, but that's Saturday and Sunday event. Like we talked about in the last couple of meetings, so come on out to that.
Alderman Kubal?
Oh, I'm good tonight, Mayor.
Ward 3 Alderman, Coladi-Pietro?
Congratulations to Tina and Nate. Very successful picnic, great weather, great turnout. Like Nate said, the Italian Club's having their festive this weekend, Saturday and Sunday. So come on out. Nate and I will be pouring beer on Sunday right after Mass. That's it.
Alderman Oberlin?
Oh, I, I didn't want to forget Lillian, Lillian's beautiful cooking. Almost forgot her, and Rick Kubei from the park. I almost forgot the two of them for all of their help. But yes, everybody come out to the Italian Fest. It's always a fun time.
Ward 2 Alderman Gazal?
Just a reminder for all the residents, next Tuesday, August 13 at 6:00 PM, we're going to do, let's meet at the park with the cop. We're going to have some prizes for the kids and some activities. So hope to see most of you there. Thank you.
Ward 1 Alderman Verche?
Nothing at this time.
Alderman Dyke?
Uh, nothing at this time here.
Public comment. Anyone like to address city council, needs to step to the podium, state your name for the record. Address is optional. Mick?
Hello, everybody. My name's Mike Schwab. I live in Crest Acres. I want to add to all the positive comments I heard about the picnic. I go to a lot of those picnics during the summer, and I have to say, I think we've got the best. My only comment is, let's keep looking to Polka Van. Us older folks, we may not fill the dance floor when they play, but we thoroughly enjoy their, that type of music. And it just makes for an enjoyable afternoon, and I think we all appreciate it. Second comment, Ed, for you. It came to mind when you talked about changing the fines for some of the tickets. My son's car is at home, and 95% of the time, it's parked in the street. We've got a busy driveway, and I do remember last winter, you know, I know all about the, you know, you've got to get the cars off the street when you get two inches or more of snow. So I pulled it into the driveway, and I mean, I, I know you're not supposed to block the sidewalks when you park in your driveway, but I had, you know, because of the two inches of snow, I had no place to put the car. And I just wonder if, you know, maybe you can cut us residents some slack under those conditions where, you know, we're getting the cars off the street to help the snowplowers, but then, you know, like I say, if you've got a busy driveway and, and, you know, you can't park it so you don't block the sidewalk, I'd appreciate it.
We can talk about it, absolutely.
Pardon?
We can talk about it, absolutely.
Okay. I mean, it's not a big deal, but it just, like I say, it's just kind of, I ran into that problem last winter. I was back, well, back in May, I was here about, when they were up in Crest Acres, they were fixing the cracks in the streets. And I brought it to the city's attention that I believe part of that bid or the contract was to have their street sweepers come out and clean up after themselves, which they didn't do. And I haven't really got any feedback, one way or the other, as to what happened there.
Well, Mick, I stopped and told you that one day, what I was.
Well, yes, you did. I shouldn't have said I didn't get any feedback. I guess I should have responded earlier, but I think you mentioned the sum, which was not even $200, which to me sounds incredibly out of line. I mean, to haul a street sweeper down from where, I know they're out of town, to haul a street sweeper down here in the hall at back, it's got to cost more than $200. Plus, you know, you've got to pay a driver or an operator, and I just thought that, you know, that there should have been more expen, maybe that there was, that we paid for more than what we got, that's all.
And Mr. Schwab, I will respond to that one. Certainly, we do hold our contractors to the contracts, and this was one that, based on the circumstances, they just didn't get them out there in time. So what we did was, as the city staff, we took our own street sweeper out there to clean up the debris, and we, we calculated the actual hourly rate based on our internal staffing requirements that it took to clean up that and had them reimburse us that amount. Because that was more efficient.
I mean, I know, right, the street sweepers were there the next day.
Correct. So it was more efficient for us to get our staff out there immediately than hire somebody out to do it.
But my point is, whatever the, the amount of that contract, whatever it was let for, included the cost of bringing that sweeper down here. I just, you know, if that's how that number came about, I understand it. I mean, it's our sweeper, it's in our backyard. I mean, but, you know, I'm sure that the cost that was built in to that contract to bring that thing down from wherever they are, to do the job and then take it back is a whole lot more than that.
In it very well maybe, but it didn't include just that single instance of street sweeping. It was multiple instances throughout the project of crack filling. So our goal was certainly to clean up the street as quickly as we could, and then the, the company's goal was to make us whole again for more expanded.
Well, one of the other comments I made back at that meeting, I was concerned about city supervision when we have contractors working in our neighborhoods. And because, I mean, somebody, I mean, I don't know, I would think somebody, whoever, you know, we let that contract out, I mean, somebody should be out there checking to make sure that, that we're getting our money's worth. All right? And I just don't feel that, that that's happening throughout the city. I know now, this summer, there's some street work being done, new curbs are being put in. And I'm aware of a problem out there where that curbs are, have been poured, and, you know, they're, they're not even running, you know, the grade on the, on the, on the curbs don't allow the water to run into the drains. So my question is, I, I underthink we've got a, we hired an engineer, we don't have a city engineer anymore.
We have somebody, and the problem that you're talking about was rectified on Saturday morning?
I'm not saying it wasn't rectified. I'm not here about that. My point is, and I've seen this in my neighborhood where they came back, I don't know, a year or two ago, and replaced sidewalks. I mean, I built my own house, all right? I know, I mean, I'm no professional, but I mean, I, I know at least what's required to put in sidewalks. And I can show you, I can walk out there, and I can show you where they put in new sidewalks, and there's no expansion joint between the old sidewalks and the new sidewalks. Why not? I mean, you know, it's, it's, I mean, anybody that works with concrete should know that. And I'm sure, I don't know, I assume it wasn't a contract. So, you know, my point is, Ray, it's not, you know, I, my, my only point I'm trying to make is I don't think we've got enough supervision over these contractors to make sure that we're getting what's required for them. They, they take every shortcut in the book, in my opinion, you know, to get the job done. It's all about get in there and get out. Back to my comment about the sidewalks, I can show you, go out there, and I can show you where the sidewalks are only four inches thick. And I know there, the city ordinance or building requirement for that is not four inches. So I don't understand, as a, as a taxpayer, you know, I'm not complaining. I think the services we get in this, in this city are, are great. I mean, I'm not complaining about the services we get, but I just don't think we do a good job looking over these contractors and making sure that, you know, they take care of the contract and, and do what's, they're required. I mean, do we ever have punch lists, you know, after a job, go around and?
Absolutely do.
So.
And I understand your frustration, you know? I'd love to have somebody there 24/7, Nick.
All right.
No, and you know, no, hang on. I, I listen to you now. Please listen to me.
Okay.
I'd love to have somebody there 24/7. We have multiple projects going on. They can't be there all the time, just like we can't have a, a police officer on every corner. So we do the best that we can.
Yes.
Okay? Are there mistakes? Yes. When there are mistakes, we try to rectify them as soon as possible. The incident that you were talking down on Pasadena, the contractor was there, we worked through it. They, they, they were the one that fixed everything at no cost to us. So it was taken care of. The city engineer that represents Christopher Burke was out there that morning, and everything was taken care of. Now, he's got other responsibilities besides Pasadena Avenue this year. And again, I wish that he could be in all places at all times, but that's not the way it works. And we try to do the best that we can.
I understand that, Ray, and we had this conversation when I was here in May. I don't expect anybody to be there 24/7. But the point I tried to make is, when I built my house, all right, I could not pour any concrete until somebody from the city came out and inspected. I didn't have anybody at my house 24/7 overlooking what I was doing. All right?
Mm-hmm.
So no, I, I, I understand. You can't do that. But I don't understand why these contractors, whether they're doing curbs or sidewalks, are allowed to pour concrete before somebody, either a city engineer, a city hired engineer, or a building inspector goes out to that job site and makes sure it's all right, just like they did when they came to my house before I could pour my concrete. That's all I'm asking, Ray. I'm not asking for anybody being there 24/7. And the other thing is, I, I think we'd do a better job if we had our own city engineer. I don't, these guys, I'm not sure, they have no vested interest in, I think, doing what's right for this city.
We're actually advertising for city engineers right now as we speak.
I hope we get one. But I'm, I'm, you know, this is the second time I've been up here to comment about this, and other than the mayor, I don't hear any kind of response from anybody. Which tells me, I mean, I've talked to Tina, I mean, but, you know, I've been here twice now about this very same subject, and.
Mike, this was one of the questions.
Nobody seems to be concerned. Pardon?
This is one of the questions that I had when we talked about the city engineer search. Is there, is the responsibility of this new city engineer going to be on the job sites more than what we have now? And the answer is yes. So we have to, I mean, we have to be patient on hiring this city engineer to be able to oversee these jobs.
Well, I just thought we did a better job when we had our own engineers. And I think, there again, when you go hire somebody, I, you know, they have no vested interest in the city of Crest Hill other than it's another job, you know, that they've been assigned to. So I'm a little, like I say, a little disappointed that nobody is really, I guess it's all right. I mean, if that's the way it is, but as a taxpayer, I just don't think that we're spending our money wisely when we let out these contracts. And, I mean, I'm no professional builder, but I know enough to know that, you know, concrete in the sidewalks aren't supposed to be four inches thick. And I know you've got to have expansion joint between an old section of concrete and a new section. And if you want to see where the old concrete butts up against the new, come out and I'll show you. So anyway, that's all.
And regarding your comment that we're not saying anything, the way it works here, the mayor is the one responds first, and then your elected officials. So your alderman will be Tina Oberlin and Marco, so we can then do respect for them to take over and respond to you. If you direct a question to me, I'll be more than happy to assist you to answer your question. If you want me to go to your house, I'll turn it to different work. I will go, but I'm not going to overstep my boundaries on your alderman. If they want me to, I'll be more than happy to assist you. Our employees, they work really hard, and nobody is perfect. Nobody is perfect.
My point is, is Tina lives down the street from me. So if I've got a problem, there's no reason or excuse for me not to go talk to Tina.
Well, you're just saying right now.
No, no, my comment is that collectively as a body.
It's not my position to respond. If you direct a question to me, I'll be more than happy to assist you.
Well, Claudia, the point I'm trying to make is, I don't expect you to go to Ward 4 and take care of my problems, or any other ward, all right? But as our representatives for, for, you know, all the constituents that live in the city, I would think that, that I would hear some feedback from the council members, what many, doesn't make a difference what ward you're in, about my comments about how things are getting done and, you know, and are not getting done correctly. It doesn't seem to bother anybody, so.
Well, Mick, as I said to you when I stopped and talked to you after this, and I explained to you what I was told, I said to you that the majority of this discussion on things happens at work sessions. And I told you, as a citizen, it'd be in your best interest to come to those.
Well, I'm, I'm learning that, yes.
Because unfortunately, they're not televised, but that's where the majority of the, so in the defense of other members here who may have made comments, they would more than likely be discussed at a work session, and that's where they would discuss things. So I hope that you attend those because that's where the majority of things are, are discussed and talked about, and other people put their, their opinions in. And I, I've never taken anything you've said lightly. I've always looked after everything. And I just want you to understand that I, to the dismay of many people, because I am not the most popular person here with a lot of the staff, because I do hold a high mark, and when something's not right, I do say something. And I, but I want you to know that. I mean, there, there were issues in our ward with the sidewalks last time, and I was the first one here. And I brought it to their attention, and I said, this is unacceptable. So it may not have happened on camera, but it's happening.
Yeah, well, there again, my, you know, my, it's got nothing to do, I mean, I, I'm thoroughly happy with, with Tina. I guess Marco, I haven't had occasion to talk to you or work with you. But there again, tonight, I mean, this is the second time I've brought this up, and I'm just a little disappointed that, you know, that you guys aren't more concerned about the fact that, you know, our good, hard-earned tax dollars aren't for some of these jobs that the oversight, whether it's on our part or on the engineer's part that we hire, just isn't getting done, so.
And Mr. Schwab, if I may make one more.
Before any work that gets done, our, our building inspector, if he's notified something's being done, he'll go out there and he'll check it first. That I know he does.
Well, I know.
But if nobody calls him, how's he going to check something if nobody calls him?
I know. But to me, I don't know if you could put it in, in the building code or whatever, that no concrete should get poured, just like my, I keep using my house as an example. And nobody seems to understand that that's what should be done on, on sidewalks. It should be done on curbs, anytime you put concrete in the ground. You don't, it's not like working with dirt where you can go out there, and if it's a little high or a little low, you can, you can fix it. My point is, is, you know, there, getting back to my, I couldn't pour concrete until I had somebody come out and make sure that everything was done according to codes, all right? And I don't know why we can't do that on, on, on public works jobs.
Okay. I think we got the point.
All right.
All right?
All right. Like I said, but I am, like I say, I'm sorely disappointed, council members.
Mayor.
Nobody seems to be too concerned about it.
Heather, your final comment?
Just as a clarification point, this is probably upon my advice, and I know I've spoken with several aldermen about this as well. The purpose of public comment is not to get into that back and forth dialogue. It's to do that at work sessions or in other dialogues. So I just want to defend the reason that they're likely not engaging at this forum because we're setting then a precedent for all these other issues that arise. So we try to take care of these.
Well, I know.
At a staff level where we can and behind the scenes.
See, the problem with that is, is all their constituents, if they do speak up at a work session, they don't know it. All they see is what goes on here. And all, everybody you see tonight, nobody seems to be, and I'm not saying nobody cares in a work session, but I don't see anybody standing up here and saying, well, yeah, maybe we need to look into this, or we've got to do something different.
Mike, don't, don't, don't take our silence as not caring, okay?
I, I, okay, Nate.
But you have my phone number, and we've never chatted about this. This discussion has come up at work sessions, but like Heather said, this is not the place for, for us to be engaging in this conversation.
I don't, I'm not looking for an in-depth conversation over this. I'm just looking for some positive comments from you guys that says, well, okay, maybe the next work session, we need to talk about it. So that, that's all I want to say. Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Mick. You have a good night. Anybody else like to address city council? All right. Is there a need for an executive session, Heather?
No, there's not tonight, Mayor.
Motion to adjourn, Mayor.
Second.
We have a motion for an adjournment by Alderman Dyke, seconded by Alderman Verche. Roll call, please.
Joe Kubal?
Yes.
Nate Elbert?
Yes.
Marco Coladi-Pietro?
Yes.
Tina Oberlin?
Yes.
Claudia Gazal?
Yes.
John Verche?
Yes.
Scott Dyke?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, meeting is adjourned at 7:47 PM. Thank you and good evening.